Right, good evening everyone. Welcome to this meeting of the planning committee. I'm Gina Tassotion and I'm chairing the main body of the meeting. Thank you. Before it starts, I have a few announcements to make. In the case of a fire, a bell will ring continuously. Can you hear okay right? It's not reverberating. Okay, I'm just checking the sound at the minute. If this occurs, please leave the building immediately following the green fire exit signs out to the assembly point, which is by the war memorial on Duke Street. If anyone requires assistance, please let me know. Lifts should not be used. Please remain at the assembly point and do not attempt to return into the building until you've been advised that it's safe to do so. The toilets are situated on the landing at the top of the main staircase and on the ground floor in the customer service centre. Please turn off your mobile phones during the meeting. Anyone attending this meeting is entitled to film it, but only councillors, officers and anyone sitting around these tables may be filmed. Members of the public should not be filmed, so please ensure the cameras are pointed only in this direction. This meeting is also being broadcast via YouTube and recorded. When speaking, please, may I remind the committee to ensure you turn on your microphone and speak closely into it. A red light will appear on the middle button to indicate that your microphone has switched on. When finished speaking, please remember to turn your microphone off again. Do it in a second. Right, first thing is apologies for absence, Jan.
Thank you Chair. We have received apologies from councillor Lodge and councillor Sampson. Councillor Fascona and councillor Walsh will be substituting on their behalf.
Thank you. Declarations of interest. All members are reminded they must disclose any interests they know they have in items of business on the meeting's agenda, and they must do so at this point or at a further point if they suddenly realise they have that problem. If the interest is disclosable, pecuniary interests, they also are obliged to notify the monitoring officer in 20 days, 28 days of the meeting. There will be several tonight and I will start the ball rolling. I will declare an interest, a non-registerable interest in item 11. May I have other apologies as such? Councillor Dobson.
Yes, thank you Chair. I called in items seven to 10, so therefore I will need to be removed from the room, I believe.
Thank you. Next councillor, I know there are several. Councillor Lee.
I'd like to declare an interest in item 11, so I'll be withdrawing from the meeting.
And the same for me. Item 11, I'll be withdrawing from that.
Councillor Fascona.
And likewise, item 11.
Councillor Walsh.
And the same, item 11.
Thank you. Councillor Pully.
Yes, councillor Pully, also general item 11. I am the ward member and so I am declaring an interest but will address the committee as a ward member.
Yes, and then it is necessary for you to leave the room.
Yep.
Thank you. Moving on, we go on to the minutes of the meeting on the 28th of May. About seven o'clock. Is it your wish that I sign these as a true record? Please, thank you. Thank you. Item five is public question time, where normally questions can be asked if people can't stay for the actual item. And in this case, we can only take questions on item 11, and it's best if those are left until then. I assume there's no one who wants to speak now? Okay, thank you. No, you didn't have any. Right, thank you. The next item is item six. Landies of Mill Lane, Great Lees, Chelmsford. We were minded to approve this application last time. Further information was requested and we have brought it back to this meeting because it had to be deferred for the application to be approved or otherwise as needed. Only councillors who attended the first meeting are able to participate. Okay, I'm getting record information. Right, the committee took the view contrary to the officers' advice, so we need a further report from the officers as to the potential reasons for approval.
Thank you Chair. I will be very brief. There is only one slide. The proposal, as you will recall, is for a detached house in the rural area. Ordinarily, planning permission would not be granted for a house in this location, but one of the exceptions set out in national and local policy is for a house of a design of exceptional quality. And on the screen there is the test, the wording from National Planning Policy Framework. So at the previous meeting, members were of the opinion that the proposed house was of sufficient quality, was truly outstanding and met all the tests prescribed in national planning policy. So to that end, officers have suggested a number of planning conditions which are set out on your agenda pack. There are more conditions and they are in more detail than would ordinarily be the case for a standard residential house. And this is to ensure that the development is carried out to that exceptionally high standard that justifies that planning permission is granted. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, do you wish to speak about the conditions? Thank you, councillor Lily.
Thank you Chair. Thank you for the comprehensive conditions. I did notice that they are more substantial than usual. Only one minor thing, the numbering of them. It goes 15, 16, 17, then back down to 15. So just revert that. Other than that, perfect, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dobson.
Thank you Chair. I just have a couple of clarifications, please. On condition three, where the energy performance has to be made publicly available, et cetera, what happens if it doesn't meet the required standard, just out of interest? And condition fifteen, the soft landscaping and trees, et cetera, should we add something to the effect that if any of it dies, it should be replaced within a certain time period? Thank you Chair.
You happy to come back on that?
I am. Apologies. So in terms of the conditions will need to be discharged, so we will have your... Planning conditions will need to be discharged in a formal way and application has to be made to the council and we will consider that information. In the event that, for example, condition three, energy efficiency tests aren't met, we would expect to see some very detailed justification as to why that was not the case. And then we would take a decision at that point whether we felt that that was an acceptable justification or not. And then we would either approve or not approve the planning conditions as such. But until we've got that information and we know whether or not we have an issue or not, it's difficult to go any further. In terms of the retention of the planting, if we've missed that, apologies and we will double check that. And if it's not there, we can make sure that that condition is finalised with that extra requirement.
Yes?
May I just, just the wording on condition three, it says that the performance building will be evaluated over a 12-month period post-occupation and shall be, oh, how it would be evaluated, but the development shall then be recorded and the energy performance of the building evaluated as approved. Does that mean, I may be wrong, but I read that, that the 12 months hence, you will check to see whether it has met the conditions or is that prior to the... My point was if it, 12 months hence, it hadn't met those requirements, what happens?
We would want to understand why, what's gone wrong. You know, this is a building at the toppest end of energy efficiency, so we would want to understand at that point what, why, what's gone wrong. Help us understand, is there something that can be done differently? Is there something that needs to be changed on the building at this point? Do you make it be more energy efficient? But hopefully, we won't get to that point. Hopefully, it will be an excellent building in terms of its energy efficiency.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Councillor Highland.
Thank you Chair. I'd like to thank our officers for their continued efforts to fully advise this committee of all the implications and planning considerations to support their considered decisions being made here. Whilst I understand some of the members of this committee have sought to challenge recommendations, I found them wholly unfounded in planning terms, likely to be reckless and likely to put at risk this council's finances and resources that could be diverted to supporting. Can I ask for you to confirm your recommendation for this planning application, please?
No, we, our recommendation in relation to the application hasn't changed. We've simply produced conditions in response to the members' request for conditions to be considered because members are minded to approve.
Councillor Pully.
Yeah, thank you councillor Highland, thank you for that clarification. It does seem to me that the wording is slightly different, that this committee being minded to approve, the officers have been asked to and have come forward with recommended conditions for approval. Their recommendation now is for the conditions that would apply to approval, not that they recommend refusal. Thank you.
Yes, our recommendation is the wording of the condition, not the decision.
I would also like to put my point at the moment, that I would feel uncomfortable taking the recommendation to approve this. So I will be asking someone else to put the recommendation, should it happen. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Councillor Pully, would you be willing to put the recommendation?
Thank you.
Or are we not? Just check whether there is anyone else who wishes to speak first, but at the moment I will need someone to put the recommendation. Sorry.
Yeah, that being the case Chair, I would like to propose that we accept the recommendation for these conditions apply to the approval of this application as set out in the officer's report. Thank you.
Do you have a second? We do? In that case? All those in favour? Thank you. And I will be saying against. Thank you. I believe there are no abstentions? In that case, the recommendation to accept this design is approved. Thank you. Right, we shall now move on. Thank you, and those who need to leave. The next four items are linked and were also deferred from the 28th of May. So again, only councillors who attended this first meeting are able to participate. The committee took the view contrary to officers' advice and were minded to refuse the application. Further reports from officers as to the potential reasons for refusal are now required. We're going to deal with the applications individually and for each application, we look at the reasons for refusal and vote on these reasons individually. I'll have the officers' report, please.
Thank you Chair. Some of you may be aware that early, last week, we became aware that four appeals had been submitted to the planning inspectorate. The reason, the reasons for the submission of those planning appeals was against non-determination of the planning applications within this statutory timeframe. But as of 5pm this afternoon, we had not received notification from PINS that they are valid appeals. So in the absence of that formal notification of valid appeals from PINS, the council is able to determine the four applications this evening. So there were five matters of concern that were raised by members at their previous discussion that officers identified.
Sorry, I had forgotten to say that this first one is 24 double double, double double O, three eight six F U L. Landies of Braggard, Robbins, Lower Stock Road, Elliotis Frey Hay Barn. Sorry, I haven't said that.
We'll come on to that.
This is a general introduction to this.
So five matters of concerns were raised by members that officers have identified from the previous discussion. These matters related to health, pollution, traffic, visual intrusion and submission of separate planning applications. Officers' opinion is that one of those matters, in that the applicant had chosen to submit four separate planning applications, is not defendable as a refusal reason. And you will see from your agenda papers that officers are unable to suggest wording for a planning refusal reason on this concern. I'm going to begin this evening with the application for the hay barn. And the officer's report discusses the five areas of concern in turn. The last one of those relates to how the applications were submitted and as already explained, officers have not provided any wording for that refusal reason. Refusal reasons that officers consider to have more strength in being defended at appeal are suggested refusal reasons number three and four in the report, and these relate to the traffic impact and the visual impact of the development in the locality. Suggested refusal reasons one and two, which relate to health concerns and pollution concern, are, in officers' view, much more difficult to defend at appeal. Storage of hay in itself is highly unlikely to cause health or pollution problems. However, should the committee decide to pursue those as refusal reasons, some wording is suggested. I will now go on to put on the screen each of the suggested refusal reasons in turn for members to consider and to decide whether or not to include or to propose amendments. To assist members and Chair, I would suggest that you take the suggested refusal reasons set out in the officer's report in reverse order. So we'll start with refusal reason five, then four, then three and so on. So the first refusal reason for the hay barn relates to members' concern about how the applicant decided to make the planning applications as four individual applications instead of one application for four buildings. And as already advised, officers do not believe there is a robust sense of such a refusal reason. Refusal reason four. This relates to the large-scale development out of keeping with oversuburbanity.
We were going to do them individually.
Sir Chair, are you proposing to stop after each one and for the committee to discuss and then vote on whether to include that or not? Okay, so we'll hold it there after refusal reason five.
Okay. Councillor Pully.
Yes, I understand the officer's reason for not wanting to create a reason for refusal for this particular, this particular item. And in the absence of other speakers, if it comes to that, then I will recommend that we accept officers' advice in respect of this particular reason.
Thank you. Shall I take a vote on that? All those in favour of dropping that reason, please raise your hands. Anyone against? Any abstentions? No, in that case, that reason is out. Thank you.
So if we go on to the next refusal reason, which is refusal reason four in your agenda pack, which is one of the two refusal reasons that officers consider to have more strength in being defended at appeal. And this, this relates to large-scale development out of keeping with a small rural field. And members were concerned from their discussion about the scale of that development in close proximity to the road and to residents and that it would be very visible to residents and from the public road. And so there is some suggested wording there, should members be minded to carry on with that refusal reason. Thank you.
Can I have your thoughts on that? Councillor Highland?
Yeah Chair, just a bit of a conundrum here for me, in that I voted in the last occasion to support the officer's recommendation. And should I vote to support a refusal reason, that provides me with a conflict at the end of the process. So should I simply abstain from refusal reasons until the vote is made on the carrying of the recommendation or not, as the case may be?
You can do that councillor Highland. It really is a matter for you how you vote on an item. I can't obviously direct you on how to vote, but I can understand your position. And obviously, you're not the only member who's in a similar position. If you wish to abstain, that would be understood.
Okay.
Just on that one, do you think there is sufficient strength to carry that reason on each individual application? Or is it that the accumulation of the four applications together achieves that? And therefore, is it officers' opinion that we, is it that to achieve that, we almost need to judge them together or refuse some and approve? I know you can't say how is to vote, but do you think there's enough strength in that refusal reason that holds on each individual application? Because obviously, that's how it would come back to as that appeal.
The draft reason for refusal talks about the cumulative scale of the proposed building. So it's logical, I suppose, to, I mean, that does look at the all four buildings. So it would seem illogical if that were only applied to one of the buildings. But it does make sense because if, for example, if two of the buildings, the committee resolved to approve, you would still have a cumulative effect by adding the other two. So you can argue it either way, I think. But clearly, this is a, in terms of cumulative impact, that's looking at the four buildings as a whole.
Councillor.
And likewise, continuing with that theme, of course, this is a hay barn and not a cow barn. So if we were minded to grant permission for a hay barn, surely we could do so discreetly from the other three barns? And I'm pretty certain that if a hay barn went to appeal, it would be granted, but...
I feel the same way about that.
Yes, but this particular reason for refusal is about the scale of development in relation to the size of the field. So the building for the hay barn is much the same scale as the buildings for the cows.
Sorry. The problem seems to be that it's a slight contradiction because we're not, you don't advise us to use the fact that four individual applications have been made as a, you know, that is not a good reason for refusal. And yet, this reason for refusal refers to the other applications. So it's a little bit of a contradiction because if we're talking about this application by itself, that might be accepted, as other people have mentioned, but it's when it's combined with the others. Are we allowed to do this? The cumulative scale of the proposed buildings refers to, is referring to all four applications?
I'm feeling it's up to us, as we are trying to decide. The officers have given us information. We have to decide on the basis of that information. If we feel, as a committee, that it is good enough or not, I think we are asking officers to do more than they should need to do. It's our decision, it's our thoughts at the moment that we need.
Well, that's right, and I feel that there's a certain illogical, you know, there's a certain contradiction there, and that is the problem.
At the moment, we are looking at first application.
Sir Chair, I think we can answer that. I don't think there is a contradiction. The reason, refusal reason five was simply about the fact that there were four separate applications rather than one, one application for four buildings. And that's not, you know, you can do that, but the effect is the same in terms of four buildings. Therefore, it's quite reasonable to consider the impact of four buildings because you know that there is a proposal for four buildings. They're not alternatives to each other. They've not been put forward as alternative locations for one building. The proposal clearly is for four buildings and therefore it's quite reasonable, I think, for you to consider the impact of four buildings in this location.
Good. I mean, I did think, Phil, it is reasonable to consider the others, but I didn't know whether we were legally obliged to consider each one in isolation, as it were, but maybe not.
Thank you, councillor Hall.
Can I sort of refer to, thanks Chair, to protected lane status? I was trying to follow up on that, what that actually means, and obviously, it's there for a reason. And I don't know where that is legally, where it stands legally, but it's in the policy and it mentions about preservation and it mentions about capacity and use and preserving sort of the local environment. And that's the particular area that I was concerned with, given the scale of this proposal. But I was trying to measure what, you know, what that means, what that kind of concept is and where you would step over the line or remain within it.
Is this related to this reason for refusal? Because we are coming on to traffic and access, but we can answer it now if it's relevant to your consideration of this reason for refusal.
Yeah, I mean, this concept...
Could you put it back on?
This concept seems to be created to protect the area. There must be some measure of what, how that, the proposal to change the area would tip the balance to, you know, over what constitutes a protected lane. This is a protected lane, correct? I think we identified that in the first meeting. So that obviously has a meaning and some status that has to be adhered to. And I don't know whether that's enshrined in law or it's just a local policy.
Protected lanes are what we call a non-designated heritage asset. They are historical lanes, they've been there for a very, very long time. They tend to be... to be in the rural area, obviously, and, and tend to have, you know, green verges and, and hedge roads. And they're part of that wider rural character. I'm going to suggest if, if, if the councillor feels that the, the wording of the condition needs to be expanded a little bit, in terms of where we suggest it's out of keeping with the character of the area, you could expand that to make specific reference to the character of the non-designated heritage asset, which is protected lane. That would be for, you know, the councillor to propose as part of the discussion. But it's, it is part of that wider rural presence. And if you want to give more weight to that non-designated heritage, that's for you to do.
I'll leave that with you. Uh, Councilor.
Uh, thank you Chair. Just looking at the reason four now, has actually got a re, uh, reason for reason five as well. I know we have not considered that. The reason five is written up in afterwards to just reject the application based on individual. But then, as we can clearly see, it's one application, I mean, it's four application made by one applicant at the same time, which then brings us to reason four, which is part of large-scale development and keeping in, on a small field. I'm, I'm just saying that reason five has also got a link to reason four. And I can clearly see that this should be refused based on, very strongly on reason four.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak on this reason in particular? Councilor Pully.
Yeah, first of all, I'd, I'd just like to thank Mr. Holmes and, and councillors for the clarification or the questioning about the ambiguity which has been involved here. Before Mr. Holmes's answer, I was going to say that I was okay with that, perfectly okay with considering this reason for refusal, and that in my experience of appeals, the inspector would fully understand the occasional question marks that come up in relation to the, the status of this or that in relation to the particular hearing. But given Mr. Holmes's response to that, that we, that there is no meaningful ambiguity, I'm perfectly happy with that. And that being the case, and with the amendments that Councilor Hall was suggesting to Mrs. Hill-Sanders, then I'd like to propose that we accept the reason for refusal as set out in the officer's report.
I'm happy to let you do that, because again, I am uncomfortable with that reason. So, you would need a second, do you have that? Councilor Hall. Okay. All those in favour of that reason at the moment, that's all we're looking at? Three, four, five, six, I believe, yeah. Seven? You have seven? Okay. Sorry, I can't hear you without the microphone. Can you just let Jan tell me how many? Six. Yes, I thought so. All those against, and that will include me. All those abstaining? Right, so there's one, two, three. So... That is looked at as a reason for issues. Okay, thank you. Because it's getting more complicated with people abstaining. Okay, we go on to the next reason this week, mate.
It's not straightforward.
The next suggested refusal reason, which officers feel carries some weight, and in terms of being defendable on appeal, is the traffic generated by the proposal. Members were concerned about traffic generation generally. There is no traffic on the field at the moment, obviously, and there would be more traffic as a result of the agricultural development and the activity generated. The applicant did provide some information about their expected traffic generation as a result of the development, but, but members were persuaded, I believe by arguments and concerns raised by the public particularly, that, you know, traffic resulting from the development would be harmful to all users of lower stock road.
Again, we need to look at this reason. Can I have your thoughts, please? Councilor Lee.
Thank you Chair. I was, I was always taught with planning that it's quality over quantity when it comes to reasons for refusal. This one here, I don't think there's much strength in it. Essex County Council highways have raised no objections, and if this was to go to appeal, the first thing the inspector would do would be looking at that and say, what's our issue? If we have an issue and believe that we should be refusing it on highways grounds, we need strong supporting evidence. We don't have any strong supporting evidence to suggest that there is a genuine highways issues here. So for that reason, I could not support this particular reason for refusal.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak? Councilor Pully.
Sorry, again, again, based on my experience, slightly different from Councilor Lee's. I think that I've had several situations where we have, we have run afoul of the fact that we have not included a reason for refusal, which might in the event of the appeal itself have been more telling than the reasons that we did in fact include. So that provided there is sufficient strength in a particular reason, I think we should, we should adopt this particular one as well. And I would just point out that it talks about the increased risk to the users of the road in question, not, as was said by the officers just now, harmful to all users. It talks about the increased level of risk, which is a question of judgment, rather than a question of evidence, and that's judgment that we, in my opinion, can make. So for me, if there's no other comment, I would like to propose that we do include this reason for refusal.
Do you have a second, and do, do you wish to speak first? Please. I'll leave the second for the moment.
Really, really just to echo Councilor Pully's comment really, and officers already stated that refusal, refusal, refusal condition three is, is one of the stronger conditions as well, so, yeah, just to add that really.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Councilor Pully, unless anyone else wishes to speak, do you have a second? Do you have a second? Okay, thank you. In that case, all those in favour of that reason, please say. Five? Okay, all those against. Three. Any abstentions? I, three. So that's six, so therefore that reason falls, as far as I can see, am I correct? Is it? Okay, without the abstentions. Okay, in that case, that is in, sorry. Okay. Right, do you have another refusal, uh, reason?
Two more.
I get them at the end.
Chair, the fourth reason, which is actually refusing, refusal reason two in your agenda pack, relates to concerns members raised about pollution. The proposal is for a hay barn, hay storage in itself is unlikely to result in pollution. So, if members are, are minded or are of the opinion that they, they, there would be concerns with pollution, there is some suggested wording there. But officer's view is on this application, we feel that that's quite a weak planning argument to defend at appeal.
Okay, back to all of you. Yes, please.
Yeah, I, I didn't see any particular substance to number two, so I, I would be minded to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hallen.
Uh, thank you Chair. I would support this clearly. The application didn't have much sufficient information to demonstrate that the storage and collection of items for animal waste, which in turn leads to pollution and health concerns and stuff like that. So yeah, I will be in support of this refusal reason.
Right, we have some either way, Councilor Pully.
Yes, I'm very happy to propose the inclusion of this reason. I just had one question, and that's whether it's helpful to regard this as a cumulative aspect of the overall proposal or not. Because obviously that might overcome some of the, some of the fears that was expressed as, for it being weaker. If it's cumulative, then clearly it does include things that are happening in the other barns, which are effectively being regarded as one, even as four separate applications. Thank you.
My view is, no, you couldn't. It's, it's a hay barn, and I don't think you can, there's no cumulative effect in relation to a hay barn, because there are no other hay barns, and it, and in relation to contamination and pollution, you would have to show that the build, this particular use of the building gives rise to those problems. Can I just say also that we, as we learnt last time, the, you, in terms of defending a position at appeal, bearing in mind how heavily regulated farming activities are, in our view, it would be very difficult to show that a hay barn would cause contamination and pollution. Because, unless we have evidence to show that, that, the, the building won't be, or the use won't be managed in accordance with legislation that exists to control these matters, then it would be very difficult to see how we could defend this as a reason for refusal, particularly in relation to the hay barn.
Thank you. Councilor Pully.
I mean, I'm happy with, with the response to whether it can be cumulative or not, let's leave that to one side. But I see that it's very clear from the national guidance, that the council has to be clear that there is no risk of these things, that's what it says. And so, and so the way in which the refusal reason is, is spelt out, it's saying that we, we have no evidence to be satisfied that there is no such risk. And therefore, what we're saying is exactly in line with what the government requires us to be. So I would like to propose that we do include this reason.
Is there anyone else who wanted to speak? Councilor Fatscone, you've got your microphone on.
Yes, I did want to speak, thanks. No, just, I don't really understand how, if this is a cow, if this is a hay barn, it's not the cow barn, how animal waste could, could apply with this particular application. So I don't feel I could support it either.
Okay, Councilor Lee. Oh, the answer's there, I think. Okay, in that case, we'll look at whether we... Councilor Pully, you will have to put the... Sorry, I can't hear you.
My proposal is that we include this reason.
Right, do we have a second, Councilor Papa? All those in favour of that reason? All those against? I think that falls, definitely. Okay? We have one more. For this application. Apologies, did you abstain? Yeah.
Thank you Chair. The final refusal reason is refusal reason one in your agenda pack, and this relates to health concerns that were debated last time. Officers have no evidence that hay storage would generate odours or suchlike, that would be detrimental to the amenity or the health of residential properties nearby, the closest of which, you recall, is about 60 metres away from the hay barn.
Okay, thank you. Back to you. We have to be very careful with these reasons, as you can see. It's very important we get this right. Who would like to speak on this particular reason? Yes, Councilor Armstrong.
I think this reason wasn't raised for the hay barn element, so I'm happy that we don't include it.
Okay, again, we will have a, uh, Councilor Thorpe.
I, I agree, I, I think in the discussions at the last meeting, I don't think that we were talking about health concerns in relation to the hay barn, so I, I don't think this is relevant.
Okay. Again, all those in favour of this particular reason?
I think, I think most of the members are saying not including.
That's right. Sorry. All those in favour of not including this particular reason? Sorry, I've done it, there aren't many. All those against? It does get very complicated, as you can see. Do we have some abstentions? We have three abstentions. So this is not including. Thank you. So, back to you Sarah, we have two.
Right, so Chair, I think, I, I think what you need to do now is to, is put the, put a recommendation to the committee that the application be refused for the two reasons that the committee have agreed, with the amendment to include reference to the protected lane suggested by Councilor Hall. And then we'll deal with that one and move on to the next one.
Thank you. In this case, again, I'm uncomfortable about doing that, so I'll pass it on to Councilor Pully.
Thank you, yes, so I, I, I don't mean to reiterate Mr. Holmes's words, but I think that the recommendation is that the committee approve this, this application for the two reasons which we have discussed, with the second reason amended as we also discussed. No, I tell you, thank you. That we approve the refusal for the reasons, for the two reasons that have been suggested.
I'm glad it's not just me, thank you. Do you have a second? Councilor Papa? All those in favour of refusing for those reasons?
You're voting in favour of refusing for those reasons that have been discussed, so the large-scale development with the amendment for the protected lane and traffic on those two grounds.
Okay, only of those.
Refusal on those grounds, yeah, on those two grounds, as you discussed. It's basically reiterating the majority decision that members already made, but we're just being absolutely clear.
I mean, I, I think there comes a point when the committee should feel as individuals obligated to abide by and support a committee decision. And so I would not expect, in an ideal world, there to be refusals or abstentions to this particular proposal, that we recommend that the, that the application be refused for those two reasons.
That's entirely a matter for members. If members wish to abstain on a matter, they're entitled to do so. I, I wouldn't direct a councillor on how, whether they vote for, against or abstain. It's entirely a matter for a councillor to decide.
Uh, Councilor Hallen.
Just a, again, a point of order, just to make sure that the committee here are voting to, against the recommendation of officers.
Yes.
If you, if you say these recommendations, these are, these reasons for refusal are valid.
Yes, we are.
Just so committee members understand that.
So basically refusing, refusing the application.
Yes. Okay, all those... Can you put your mic on?
I'm sorry, I'm not really following it still.
Lorraine, can you, can you just listen, this is legal? It's very important we get...
It is very important, I need to...
You're, you're voting on whether you're for or against or abstaining to refuse the application on the grounds of large-scale development with the amendment for the protected lane?
Right, okay.
And highways grounds?
Okay, now I understand.
That's what you're voting for.
Okay, thank you.
So when they ask if you're for, you're saying you want to refuse the application on those grounds, if that's what you're voting?
Okay. In that case, can we go back to Councilor Pully's suggestion?
As it's just been clarified to us, those in favour. Those in favour that the original application be refused on the two grounds that we have just agreed earlier, yeah.
Yeah. Those, those refusers, those specific reasons only.
Six.
We've got somewhere, six? All those against? All those against? We had councillor Papa seconded, yeah. All those against?
Against is two.
Abstentions? Right, in that case, it's carried. The hay barn has been approved. Thank you.
Yeah. It would be helpful if... I understand the point you're asking for clarification on, but members have decided to refuse the application. I think everyone in the room understood that. What the Chair was referring to was you've approved that recommendation. I think that's what she meant. But it has been refused on the grounds that have been discussed already.
Okay. Move on then to agenda item eight. Now, again, we need an officer of vote. And are we still dealing with these individually? Okay?
Yes, I think we've got the hang of it now.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chair. So this report relates to cow barn one, which is item eight on the agenda, and we'll go through that application on its merits. So similar to the report for the hay barn, officers have identified the same five matters of concern expressed by members at their previous discussion. The last one of these, again, relates to how the applications have been submitted, and as already explained, officers have not provided any wording for such a refusal reason. Similar to the hay barn, refusal reasons that officers consider to have more strength in being defended at appeal are refusal reasons number three and four, which relates, again, to the traffic impact and the visual impact of the development on the locality. Suggested refusal reasons one and two, which relate to health concerns and pollution concerns, are, in officers' view, more difficult to defend at appeal as refusal grounds than refusal reasons three and four. Pollution and health concerns resulting from the use of a barn for cattle may on the face of it seem more pertinent than a use for a hay storage, but this is assuming that the farm won't be run in line with best farming practices and modern farming operating controls. Cows can roam the fields in any event, and that's a material planning consideration, obviously. And also, members will be aware that public health did not raise any objection to the use of the barns for cows. So officers do remain of the view that there is no evidence that the development will result in health and pollution concerns. But again, should the committee decide otherwise and wish to pursue these as refusal reasons, we have suggested some wording. So, similar to before, Chair, if we take them again in reverse order, that set out in your agenda pack, and we'll start with suggested refusal reason number five, and we have, as officers, suggested no wording about how the applicant has chosen to submit planning applications.
Is everyone happy to remove that application? That particular reason might be the easiest way to go. Yeah? councillor Poley?
Just to be clear, the reasons that the officers feel carry the most weight are the same reasons that we have just approved in the previous application. So would it be time-consuming to jump straight to the recommendation that we agree to refuse this application on the grounds that are suggested for reasons one and two, as before? Sorry, the first and second, I mean, yes.
I think we should discuss the cow barn, because the other one was different in terms... it wasn't a cow barn. So we discuss this one, and then probably make the addition for the other two. Because there's, I think there's a bit more to discuss about health concerns and pollution, especially when there is no demonstration of how the waste management is going to be made. If that's not been made, then, you know, health concern and pollution concerns become applicable.
I understand that, just in case anyone... the suggestion was that there should be more individual discussion in this particular case, and maybe not for the following two cases. So let me first of all propose that we do not expect a reason for refusal based on the applications not having been all submitted together.
Yeah. Is everyone happy with that fact? Okay, that goes. Right, okay. In that case, we had a proposal from you, Graham, to look at the refusal reasons that the officers feel they can support at appeal. Does anyone apart from councillor Papa feel that that needs to be further discussion? Do you feel that?
Well, as I understood from councillor Poley, he was suggesting that the two reasons for refusal that have already been agreed would equally apply to the cow barn, and that we could jump to a vote on that and then move on to the other two.
Yep, okay. In that case...
We are looking to suggest that we include the reasons for refusal that have been recommended in relation to the discussion three and discussion four.
Yeah. All those in favour of including those? All those against? Any abstentions? It's accepted. Okay. So will we go on to the weaker reasons?
We go, yeah. We'll be there.
We've accepted the two.
We... I think we're cutting straight to a discussion, Chair. I think we've... we don't really have much to add on than we've already said.
Yeah, okay. All right. Do we have councillor Papa then?
So I think this is a great reason, especially when the application doesn't demonstrate the storage and collection arrangements for animal waste. And I think it leads to pollution, pollution leads to health concern, and I'm sure there is some ground for us for the reason two, and reason one as well. And we'll be coming to the next one, but to be included in this. And clearly, you can see in your last line, it's not complying with the requirements of Chemsford Local Plan Policy DM30.
Okay. Who else would like to speak? We need some more people, either for or against, please. councillor Lee.
In planning terms, I can't think how it would be worded to... in an application to demonstrate the storage and collection arrangements. Is there any planning requirements to demonstrate that? So I'm seeing a no there, so I don't see how we could include that. My belief would be that you couldn't, this wouldn't be a reason for refusal, but instead it would be a case for Public Health and Protection Services to come along later if there were a problem. I can't see how we can speak against something that we can't actually request.
Does it come back? No? Anyone else?
Just following up on councillor Lee's, I think, you know, when you do a business proposal, or any proposal, it has to have, I mean, one of the key things is pollution concern or health concern. I think it's part of the application. I know it's not probably part of the planning application, but I think it's as part of the application, it should be the basics to be covered, since the application does not contain that element covered on top of the other two elements that we already discussed. I think it's a great, and especially being a cow barn, I think it's a great reason, and especially also considering some of the residents' health, current health issues with some of the residents locally. It's important to, you know, take this aspect as a strong reason, based on some of the residents' concerns as well.
councillor Poley, did you want to come in on this one?
Yeah, I mean, I think that it's, I understand the dilemma that councillor Lee finds himself under, but it's a general hope, isn't it, that we draft our policies in a way which can be demonstrated to be complied with in approving the application, not somehow coming along at some later date to the test it. Now, in some cases, we do recognise that that can't realistically be done, but where it is possible to be done, I think we should expect it. I think in order to clarify my mind on that, could we just have a recap on the wording of policy DM30, please?
Is that not in the reason for refusal? Is that not on the screen?
Yes, that.
Yes, on the screen.
For me, that's fine, because it will only be granted where the council is satisfied that. And to be satisfied requires evidence. Otherwise, it will not be granted. That's what, precisely what the policy says. And it's arguable, you said that last time around as well, actually, yeah.
councillor Armstrong?
Just on this one, because they've split the application, it does, it falls into a small form of an application, and therefore Essex weren't consulted, and we get no SUDS information, no drainage, broader drainage design, apart from, obviously, I appreciate the roof drainage, it says at the back, and we raise concerns about that close proximity to the hedge line. But there's no drainage design, and therefore there is no design to determine the sort of concentration and the densities of cows which is greater at a barn than if it were in an open field, particularly immediately outside each cow barn, one, two, and three, on that yard strip that's there. And that wouldn't then have an effect on what the second point of the policy is, the surface water. So because they've split it up, we don't have the information to determine if there is a risk or not, and therefore the cumulative effect of three could be considered a risk. And if it was submitted as three as a whole, they would have then had to done that work, hopefully demonstrating that they were compliant with all the health regulations, and therefore there isn't a contamination risk. So my only point on this one is purely on that technical basis, that we are, we're having to assume that should they have combined all three, that it would be done in a way that is compliant, and we are potentially putting at a risk prior to public health getting involved. But I appreciate there are other bodies for that, but those risks are considered in a broader, bigger scheme, and if there was a concern of a cumulative effect, we should be mindful of them. I'm sorry, that isn't a decisive button.
Thank you. Anyone else? There is one question from me then, because under normal legislation for farming, surely that type of problem is covered as part of normal legislation, and therefore it would be acceptable? I'm not sure.
The farming industry is heavily regulated by other legislation.
Exactly what I was thinking.
I believe we referred to that at the previous meeting. So in terms of how farms are operated, how they're managed, how animals are looked after, how manure is dealt with, I mean, it's spread on fields for fertiliser, you know, without any blink of an eye for most people. So it is a heavily regulated industry.
That's what I wanted to make sure was mentioned. Okay. Well, unless anybody else wants to speak, we go again?
Yeah, I think we've reached a point where the proposal is that we include this reason for refusal in refusing the original application.
All those in favour? All those against? Three.
It's going to have to be Chair's casting vote on whether to include it or not.
Abstentions? Several abstentions again?
Yeah. It's Chair's casting vote on whether to include it or not.
Sorry?
Chair's casting vote on whether to include it or not.
Well, since I am not in favour of the application being refused at all, I don't feel I can say yes to that, so I will not include it. Thank you. So that has not been included. Can we move on to the... is there anything else on the other reasons that have been put forward by the officers that were regarded as weaker?
We want to do reason one now, health.
Reason one, okay?
Chair, the final refusal reason, refusal reason one, set out in your agenda pack, relates to the concerns raised by members to do with health, and in particular proximity of the cow barn to nearby residential properties. So officers, again, have suggested some, a refusal reason, but we have no evidence, as officers, that there would be odours or any other kind of harm that would be harmful or detrimental to health of nearby residents.
Thank you. Can we go back to the committee's reasons? Anyone want to speak on that? councillor Lee?
Thank you. A very quick one. Can officers confirm that when this was previously looked at, the Public Health and Protection had no issues with this?
Our colleagues in Public Health have no issues. We did go back and challenge them, if I can use that word, because of the level of local interest on the application, and they came back and said they had no objection. So we didn't just take their first answer, we went back and asked again, and they didn't change their position.
Okay. councillor Papa?
This is probably for clarification. So do you think, to officers, do you think if this four, the three cow barns were put together to the Essex, I mean, who are the official bodies of the pollution and health concern, that would trigger a different level of impact? Is it because it's put as individual applications, they were not able to see the large scale of impact? I'm just trying to understand that.
Chair, officers' view is that the cow barns, either individually or collectively, are not a, there's not a reason for refusal in terms of health of nearby residents.
Okay. Thank you. I think in that case, we can look at whether we include this reason. All those in favour including this reason? One? All those against? Four? Five? It's not included. Right, we are looking at exactly the same number of reasons as with the previous application.
Yeah, just to speed it along, Chair. I would have thought that the committee's view on cow barn two and cow barn three were the same as their views on cow barn one, so you might want to just take a vote on that and see where we get to.
Okay. It will speed it up for everyone. Please, can you put your mic on then?
I would like to propose that that's the case, Chair.
All those... do we have a second, councillor Papa? Okay. All those in favour of presumably using those refused, those reasons to refuse the application? All those in favour of that happening?
In favour of refusing?
In favour of refusing the application?
It's in favour of refusing all three applications, the three cow barn applications, for the reasons we've discussed.
One, two, three, four, five, six? Yep. All those against? Two? In that case, that is...
All three are refused.
Yep. And how many abstentions? One, two, and three? That's a compliment to note. Does that all?
We've done.
We have?
Sorry, Chair, through you, as is normal practice, we know that there will be appeals on these, and as this is a decision taken by the committee, we would ask the committee to nominate a member who will represent the committee in... to nominate a member who will represent the committee in the appeal process. These will be written representations, so we would draft a statement, but we would need the committee to nominate someone who would in effect sign off and agree the statement that we submit.
I will not be doing it, because of course I am not comfortable with that result. Councillor Pooley, are you able to do that?
Chair, yes, I respect your decision not to be the nominated person, but again, I would voice my surprise that the Chair would not normally go along and represent the committee at an appeal, but I'm happy to do it.
But I have, I've not agreed with the application.
I know, but I'm happy to do it in your absence, yes.
Thank you, it will be Councillor Pooley.
Do I?
It will be Councillor Pooley. Okay, okay.
So I, I'm trying to, you know, just, no.
Sorry, I just thought it was quite important to clarify. I don't, I've not come across many, I've been, I've gone quite a few years now, I've not come across many chairs who, when they're voted against something, are expected to then represent the council as the chair in relation to that. They're not really, it's not easy for somebody to do that. So I just want to take issue with that, because I think there's a number of people in the gallery who probably think that's wrong of the chair to do what they're doing, and actually that's not the case, I think that's a bit disingenuous.
But she's the committee chair, no? Whatever the committee makes addition in favour, she is the...
I don't think it's worth debating, I'm giving you my opinion, it's not going to change. Thank you.
Thank you, in that case. That is the end of those, those applications. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. I know we've tried it a little, but we have to do our best. Thank you. Now, the next, can you call back Councillor Dobson, please?
The council committee is going to move, isn't it? And obviously then you can lay.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Theory, mate.
They made the meal.
I tell you, Peter. Oh, sure, come on, John.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
has done so. I'll move swiftly on then to item eleven of this agenda, which is application number twenty four zero zero seven seven four F U L ten, Molsham Chase, Chelmsford. Can I have the officer's report, please?
Good evening, Chair, thank you. And this is the presentation of item eleven on your agenda, as the Chair's just set out, application reference twenty four forward slash zero zero seven seven four F U L at ten Molsham Chase in Chelmsford. So this is the site plans of the existing and proposed development. It's located in the urban area of Chelmsford, on the eastern side of Molsham Chase, between a bungalow which is to the north and a detached two-storey property to the south. As you can see here, that the proposed replacement property is in a similar location to that We have photos of the existing property here, which shows you that it's a detached two-storey property that's lower than the neighbour to the south. The proposal, the replacement dwelling is deeper than the existing property, but it is approximately 1.5 metres narrower, creating more space to both sides of the property. There is adequate space provided to achieve sufficient isolation to prevent the property appearing overbearing from the windows of the nearest habitable rooms of the neighbours. The outlook from those windows would also not be affected. The proposal would have an increased height with rooms within the roof, but overall it would be slightly lower than the two-storey neighbour to the south. Whilst the proposed house is more temporary, when compared to other houses in the street, the design works, relates well with the traditional proportions and appearance of properties within the area and is acceptable. In conclusion, the proposal is for replacement dwelling. It would not adversely affect the residential amenity of any neighbouring properties. It would have a design form and appearance that would remain in character with the local area, has sufficient off-street parking and private amenity spaces achieved. The application is recommended for approval.
Thank you very much. I believe, Councillor Pooley, you wish to speak on behalf of the Ward, as a Ward member?
Yes, as a Ward member, rather than as, along with my colleagues having to leave.
I believe you're allowed five minutes.
Yeah, I will use substantially less. Just to say that I'm here, not having asked for this to come to committee, because it automatically comes to committee since it's an application by a member of the council. But my position as a Ward member has been that I've been working with Mr Goldman on this application as it's been through the process, and I do support the eventual conclusions, for sure. I wanted in passing to say that we both, the Councillor Goldman and I, were very pleased with the outcome of the quite extensive discussions that did take place between the applicant and his advisor and the planning officers. And it's those discussions amongst the, along with the original concept, which have led to what I think is an application which is exceptional in many respects and which is in front of you for approval. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. There being no other questions or comments, I'd like to throw it open to the floor, please.
Pooley does need to leave.
Oh, sorry, Councillor Pooley, I believe you do need to leave. We'll wait until someone likes to get the door, that's it. Okay. Don't forget the cup. Don't do that. I'd like to throw it open to committee members who would like to kick off. Councillor Armstrong?
Can I ask, was a pre-app carried out on this, prior to it coming committee? Just as a first question.
Thank you for that question, Councillor Armstrong. This application, an application was submitted previously for a placement house, and officers raised concerns at that stage, and the applicant chose to withdraw the application, and after that, pre-application discussions took place, which then led to the current proposal that's before you.
Okay. Anyone else? Sorry, did you want to?
Yeah, just a couple of things. So just to note, there's obviously three car parking spaces, but only one electric car charging point on it, and they've opted out under the self-build scheme for biodiversity net gain, which would typically be applicable to these sites, unless it's exempt under the self-build scheme. And they've obviously also, the SIL money obviously does not get applied if it's a self-build scheme, so I assume it's been confirmed that their intention is to remain resident for the three years for that to apply.
In respect to the biodiversity net gain, for us to be considering it as a self-build, they would have put that on the form as part of the biodiversity net gain. When it comes to SIL, there is a separate form that they would need to fill in for us to confirm that it was used as a self-build within three years, as you state.
Okay. Anyone else? Councillor Thorpaps?
Thank you, Chair. Just on the point really about the replacement dwelling being within the existing character of the local area, I noticed that it's next to a nineteen thirties property, although the properties on the other side of the road do appear to be fairly new. I'm not sure if they're new builds or certainly built within the last twenty years, it appears. But the replacement dwelling would look quite different, it seems to me, compared to anything else on the street. So just wondering how far the design of that has been factored in. The report notes at two point two that the properties in the area are generally traditional in appearance. So again, just some clarification on that point around whether it's actually in keeping with the area. I also noticed, just looking at Google Maps, that the site itself is at quite an elevation. So when you approach it, going along Molsham Chase from the north, it's that, it's quite prominent, the site is quite prominent. Again, I don't think that's mentioned in the report, the elevation of it and the prominence that affords the building. So again, I just wondered, was the elevation taken into account? And I had a query as well about the SIL payments, I think that was possibly just covered, but it says that the development may be liable for SIL payments. I just wondered if you could clarify whether we now know if that's the case or not. Thank you.
Thank you for those questions. So what I've put up here now is some street scene photos, which kind of shows the nineteen thirties style property that's next door and the more modern properties that are to the right. So what the property has done is they've got a gable roof form, which is, as you can see, there are some gables within the area. They have a front projecting gable, which is also, which is two-storey, which is consistent with the properties you can see on the right-hand side there. There is, in terms of the modern materials, they have used some contemporary materials, but they've kept it to small pieces, particularly on the front elevation, to make sure that where those contemporary elements are introduced, it's only smaller portions of it, to ensure that the main material that's used is the brickwork, which is consistent with the surrounding area. To the rear, there is slightly more modern materials, but because it's to the rear, the impact in terms of the overall street scene was seen to be acceptable. In terms of your particular point about from the north, it being on an elevation, this is the image from on the right, where you can see the brick elevation there which is of the property. So we have considered it from that angle as well. So whilst the report might have not specified that particular viewpoint, that has been considered as part of the application. And in terms of the SIL points, when you submit an application, there's only particular forms that you have to be submitted, you don't have to submit all your SIL forms at that stage, it's later on that when they would be then sent potentially their SIL liability, they have any opportunity to then submit their form to say they are exempt. I think that covers all your queries. Come back to me if not.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other? Sorry, Councillor Highland?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted a bit of clarification on this exemption or not for self-build. What qualifies this building for a self-build? Are they physically going to put the bricks in themselves, or are they employing a builder to do it and therefore it falls into a self-build scheme?
Oh, I haven't got the officer report in front of me. You have to be, you have to live in it for three years, so you have to be involved with the original design of the building, and you will be instructing a builder and an architect to work to your brief to design the building for your particular needs. You don't actually have to be the bricklayer yourself, some people might choose to do that, but you don't have to be. But in terms of SIL and SIL liability, that is rigorously monitored by our team in terms of all the forms that have to be filled in at all the relevant points, because it could be that any applicant secures a planning permission and changes their mind and decides to sell the plot, and then someone else might be just building it to sell on again. So as Sophie said, at this stage, they've just said, yes, we are going to build it for ourselves, and we said, okay then, that's great. But the actual tying that down comes a little bit later when they do actually start to build, and they have to fill out certain forms that are legally binding, and we do rigorously chase people who, you know, might not make the payments on time, et cetera, or try to persuade us that, you know, they're self-building when they're not really, because we do find that happens on occasion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, would you like to just come quickly back here?
Yeah. So it's a tax avoidance issue here, is if they're proven not to be self-built, is that correct?
I'm not qualified, Councillor Highland, to give you tax advice. I can only advise that SIL regulations by our colleagues in the SIL team are rigorously checked, and if people are, people are entitled to declare self-build if they are genuinely self-building. And most people do go down that route and choose to live in that house themselves to comply with the requirements, but not always, and we pick up on that at a later date.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Armstrong?
Just to put a more forward opinion, I think it's genuinely a really nice scheme, and I agree with the officers on this one, that they've assessed it reasonably and fairly. One final small question. Permitted development rights on if they immediately build this, has a condition being considered for, obviously, the bit immediately behind the flat roof and or anything in the garden? Because it is a slightly larger mass, is there a condition? Is it conditioned appropriately that would prevent then for further permitted development immediately after construction?
Sorry, I was just double-checking the conditions there. We haven't at the moment got a condition on the regarding permitted development rights removal, but if that's something that you would like to be added, I'm sure we can go through those measures.
Is there a proposal then for, are you proposing that the condition for withdrawal of, sorry?
Sorry, I think we would like to advise against it.
Of course, the committee can add that if they wish to, but I would advise against it. You have to have sound planning reasons to withdraw someone's right, and what would be your reason? The garden is big enough, the neighbour relationships are big enough, this is just a normal house in a normal street where everyone else enjoys permitted development rights. So you would have to be able to demonstrate what was so different here that would justify removing that right, and I would suggest there is nothing here that would justify that removal.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I couldn't see you behind the screens, Sarah. Is that something you still wish to propose, or are you happy to leave that?
I think I'm happy to leave. Just typically where people have flat roofs immediately behind elevations which could have been accessed openly from the middle floor, sometimes committees decide so that effectively if you've got a neighbour and you're at a higher elevation, so that from your bedroom you can't just immediately put a balustrade out and walk out onto your flat roof and see into a neighbour's garden. However, because I think the risk on this is lower on that, I'm happy that it's not.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments on that you wish to make, any further comment?
The only comment I was going to make was that even if a property, when a property has permitted development rights, you can't put a balustrade on a flat roof without plan permission.
I think that clarifies that one. Does anyone else have any comments they wish to make on this application before we go to the vote? No? Okay, fine. In that case, the officer recommendation is for approval, therefore I'd like to recommend that item number eleven, twenty four zero zero seven seven four F U L is approved, subject to the conditions numbers one through two, ten, I believe that is, is approved. Do I have a second, please? Councillor Armstrong. And all those in favour? And all those in favour? Unanimous? So that takes care of your abstentions and againsts. Thank you very much, everybody, and this meeting is now closed. Thank you.